Katie Matthews is here to lead us in. Oh, welcome. Thank you for coming.
We welcome you.
Katie's one of our upcoming seniors. One of our cheerleaders and honor students. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Okay, detention, sleep, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can have a seat if you want. Okay, please bear your head and join me in prayer. Dear Lord, I would like to thank you for Sigler Public School and our school board. We are grateful for them and all they do to support the students and help us be successful. Tonight I ask your blessing on the upcoming school year. Please be with our board members, administrators, faculty, staff, and student body at back-to-school time and all year long. May we bring glory to you as we live our daily lives and represent Sigler. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay.
There you go.
You're welcome to stay if you want to, or you can go on about your business. Whatever you want to do.
Probably go with Paul.
Thanks, Katie.
You too. Okay, this time we move on to the approval of minutes from the June 14, 2021 meeting. Changes.
No.
Comments? Make a motion that we approve the June 14 meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, second by Brett to approve the minutes from the June 14, 2021 meeting. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Kenny?
Danny?
David? Answer yes. This time we move on to the approval of incumbents.
Okay, we only have a few this month. It's getting started out. But if you look at those, we have, if you look at 466 and 470, this is a doctor's visit and services at Haskell Regional Hospital, Haskell County. And this was one of our cafeteria workers that had an accident and after reviewing it, whether to go with workers' comp or not, we elected to just go ahead and pay the bill. And so to save our standing in workers' comp. And that's 466 and 470. O'Reilly's is just summer bus maintenance supplies, some curriculum and classroom supplies. Lowe's is the plants out front and the supplies for that. Yeah, looks a lot better. And Advanced Copier is our, for our coffee supplies. And then 475, little explanation, that was, it was a little short on what was set aside for my retirement. And so they encumbered that amount to fulfill that.
When was the accident?
I'm going to yield to Melissa.
It was coding here. We had the coding in there wrong. And so it was, no, I was talking about the accident that the cafeteria worker.
Oh, I thought you meant what caused that.
No.
I, I'm going to be honest, it's been, I don't remember exactly what happened.
She was carrying something and tripped over. It had been some ice chest sitting on the floor and she tripped over.
I think it was her knee.
Her knee, okay.
But there was a pre-existing there, I believe. And that's why we decided if it might be an ongoing thing, then we could turn it over to workers' comp. But whatever, so. And then we have none in building fund or child nutrition this one.
Motion to approve incumbents.
Motion made by Brett, second by Jennifer to approve the incumbents as listed. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David? And Susie, yes. Move on to other financial reports.
Okay. And if you look right up here, this is kind of closed, this is closing out the year. So if you look at general fund, we close out. And we'll look at how that compares here in a minute. We'll close out general fund at $2,162,296. We'll close out building fund at $987,983. And then child nutrition at $212,449. So if we look at this sheet that we're used to, kind of compare our salaries for June. And we were actually up in salary this June as compared to 18, 19. But for the year, this was kind of odd. But for the year in salaries, we saved about $157,000. But if you look down at the bills, we spent about $157. We won't ever be able to do that. So we actually, we spent about, we, well, we spent $299.82 more this year than we did in 18, 19. When we talk about that, there were things like we have science adoption this year, which is, I guess, the most expensive textbook adoption year. We, we talked about, we could have held those and paid for them next fiscal year. It looked a lot better. But I told Judy, let's just go ahead and get everything paid. And we're not that concerned about what that looks like. So there was that. So that meant we did hold over last year and we paid about, I believe, the amount, about $56,000 in textbooks at the beginning of last. Really, we paid two years of textbooks in this year. There's some other things. And then we, we have about $195,000 worth of federal claims out that we spent the money in June. And we put the claims in, but we won't receive that revenue until July. So that money's still out. We've spent it, we just haven't, haven't recouped that yet. So kind of in summary, comparing the last three years, if you look at fiscal year and general fund, here's the revenue for each year. You can see we were at, our final revenue for the year was $10,281,000 as compared to $10,208,020 and $10,412,000 in 19. Here's what we spent in payroll, bills. We come in about a negative $27,000 as compared to our revenue versus our bills. I didn't have what this total was up here. But we come in a negative about $27,000, go ahead and pay it for everything as compared to '20. It was ahead about $228,000 and then ahead about $103,000, almost $104,000 in 2019. If you looked at building fund, in 2019, ending balance in the building fund was $712,000. Total expenditures that year out of the building fund was $119,000. In 2020, ending balance was $796,000. Total expenditures out of that fund was $140,000. This year, here's our ending balance, $987,000, almost $988,000. We spent $10,259,000 for that. Child nutrition in 19, and I just put ending balance because that deals with claims and everything. Ending balance in 19 was $164,000. In '20 was $161,000. This year, our ending balance was a healthy $212,449,000.
So where does the negative $27,000 come from then?
Well, it's, it's in this fund. It's in the general fund. So we're well ahead in building fund and child nutrition, but these are three separate funds.
Right, so I guess I'm getting it, because I asked a question one time, can you transfer money from one fund to another? I thought the answer was no, that's what I recall. But so I'm guessing if you're twice.
As a general rule, that's true. So this fund is going to deal like this right here. It's going to deal basically with everything but the building fund money and everything but child nutrition. Anything goes through those cafeterias is here and then of course, building fund. This is going to take all your state allocated money, your federal money, and all of that other revenue.
I'm just curious, how do you pay the $27,000 when they're showing you don't have it anywhere?
It's going into that, if you look back at that, this building fund balance, lack, this is our, we have that money set aside. So last year, I believe that was 2.189 or something. So we ate into that about $27,000.
Everybody doing good? Questions, comments? Okay, this time we move on to public comment. Board of Education writes, have a comment at this point in the regular meeting. A comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B D D dash R. No one present for that. Information items, superintendents reports.
Okay, first off, we have a ARP, that consultation and strategic planning committee meeting Wednesday at 3:00. That ARP is that American Recovery Plan. This is to deal with our ESTER III funds. And we, we need to, we need to build a committee and to address where we're going to point those funds. So we've kind of talked about toward facilities. And we talked about 20% of that will go towards learning loss. And once we set that aside, I'm, in my head, I'm thinking that still leaves about 2.8 million. So this meeting is to start that process. We need to have input from stakeholders on where that money goes. And so I would like at least one or two board members to sit in on that if possible. And I know that 3:00 PM, you know, most people are working. So, but if you guys, if we had one or at least one board member present, that would be good.
I'd be if they Wednesday, Thursday.
And you can. It's open. If you can be here, fine. You know, if not, that's understood.
Wednesday at 3:00.
It's Wednesday, this day after tomorrow at 3:00 PM.
Today's Monday.
I'm sorry. All my days are set together.
And we have school personnel, have Ron Perry represent the Choctaw Nation, Janice Williams with the chamber. And there's Stephanie Long, the parent, that kind of thing on that committee. So if you guys could be present, we'll just have some conversation on where we're going to direct those funds.
That $10 million that you showed earlier for this year, you know, all three years, $10 million something. Did that have any of our ESTER III money in that $10 million number? Or is that just strictly what we got from the state and federal money?
That, all that'll have is what we've spent and received back in claims. So, I'm sorry, and we're going to use this next year because when you talk about ESTER II monies being spent, ESTER III monies, we received the 21st Century Grant. And now, well, it's in here, but we just received a counseling grant worth 96, if I say million, $96,000 over three years, $32,000 a year to fund another half of another counselor for the district. So that will also be another source of revenue and it'll get kind of confusing.
Yeah.
But, I'm sorry, if you look at that report and it's in your financials, where it breaks it down by category, I know right now you'll see ESTER II and it will say 1.4 something million. It'll show nothing's been spent. It doesn't even show up with ESTER III yet.
Our carryover from last year, the 2 point, I can't remember the number, the 2 point something million. Is that with ESTER II money in that?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so actually there's 3 million something in there.
Oh, there's a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Now, if you were able to deposit that, you're probably looking at 6 or 7 million.
Okay, okay. That's what I was, the number just wasn't all there.
Because it's not, like, there's some of that CARES Act, a little bit of it, that's not in that because we haven't claimed it yet. We'll send a claim and then they'll deposit it in our account. Then it shows up on there.
Are you going to keep that separate on your reports?
We're going to have to come up with a report, like we've done this one this year. It'll be a little more complex than that because of all that money.
And do we know yet, I think seems what we talked about before, whether you can use this money that you're going to meet about on Wednesday night for capital projects or if it's just a?
I think we're going to be able to, to an extent. And they're, they're coming out with an application for building that you can do. Now, testing the waters on that's going to be, you know.
You got a house bill coming up on that too?
No.
It's, it's, and it's state. The state superintendent and they were the ones that have to talk about that first, don't they?
Well.
They have to come in.
Now, they did a, they passed a law that you could deposit ESTER II and III money into your building account. But that's on a claim basis. So you have to get the approval to use that money first. Let's say they said you could build a building out here. You would get approval. And then when you put that claim in, you know, you had that invoice, paid the bill. Now you're going to put a claim in to get reimbursed for that. They can reimburse it into your building fund.
You get approval from the state, from the state superintendent, right?
Right, there's kind of a go-between between us and the feds on that, so.
That's where the approval comes from.
Some of the discussion that I've heard is that if you designate a room or an office in a building that you're building for a facility to put your records for your COVID information or your, say, a nurse's desk, to have that stuff situated, that that would go for as a possible advantage to get that building.
Yeah, it's got to respond to COVID. And it can be a new wing on your school. The, the conversation, like you're saying, is that that, that provides more room. It provides more social distancing and that kind of makes how you have to approach that.
Okay, it's all the details, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
That's how you approach it.
Okay, lost it. Okay, so that's at 3 o'clock on Wednesday. We met with representatives from ACT this, about a week ago, last week. And we talked a little bit about this was going to be our goal for, for this next year. Last year was just distance learning, learning how to do Google Classroom, those types of things. This year, our faculty's kind of focus is going to be on implementing this ATC Aspire slash Mosaic Adaptive Learning Platform. And what that's going to allow is kind of two or threefold in that, number one, it'll give the teachers a formative type of assessment where they can give, this, and this mosaic is adapted to the Oklahoma Academic Standards and ACT. So that, we were happy about that. And so they can give this lesson, and for example, send it home. They can do it on their Chromebook. And then when they come back in the next morning, that teacher already has a readout of where their strengths and weaknesses are on that, on that lesson. So when all those questions in that lesson are tied back to some standard, which is what our testing's created off of. So it will give us those short-term lessons that teachers can use. So instead of waiting until the end of the year and seeing how well your kids are doing, you can do it on a weekly basis and kind of do it as you go. They can incorporate this in their classroom. It'll give us periodic summative review so we can do our quarterly data. So also yearly, like you take the ACT test and it gives you a score. It'll give us that also and tell us, as you go along through school, how you would do, how you kind of compare as a fourth grader on the ACT test. And that's kind of what we're all about. And then that'll give us valid data to present to the board, to present to parents, and to present to the community. And the other thing, when a parent talks to their students, a second grader, and they're talking to their teacher about test scores and how they're doing, then when they get to be a seventh grader, they're using the same terminology. So it's not two different systems. So that's something that we'll have on this next agenda to approve, to purchase for the district. And it'll, I think that'll give us a consistent data that we, when we go outside our doors, that people can respect out there, whether you're talking to another teacher in your building or you're talking to someone from another school. So looking forward to that. Like I said, we received a counseling grant a couple of weeks ago. And this, this position will take care of all the WEDA testing, which deals with English language learners throughout the district. That's kind of a bulky responsibility. Along with that, they and Jessica Morris at the high school will be the ones that kind of head up this ATC, ACT Aspire and Mosaic platform. And they'll kind of go to training and be the experts in the district for that. So anything creating a new and implementing a new platform, confusion's going to be your biggest problem. So we want plenty of training to our teachers so that they can effectively use this. So, but we're excited about having that other counselor. They can deal with academics, personal issues. They'll be doing the WEDA, they'll be over the Aspire. And then they'll have time outside of that to counsel individual students throughout the district. We have, we talked about getting beds on our roofing at the middle school and high school. We have a pre-bed meeting for potential bed bidders for the roofing repairs and awnings at the middle school and high school on next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, at 10:00 AM with the bid opening, the bid opening on that to be August the 3rd at 10:00 AM. So anybody that's been in the paper the last two weeks. And then they'll have the meeting to go over the project with any potential bidders a week from Tuesday. And then we'll have bids ready on August the 3rd for any of those, for those repairs. And then lastly, we'll probably need a special board meeting in late July. We won't go over that right now, but I see us having to hire up to three positions right there before school starts. And then I would like to look at, if we have that special meeting, then being able to present that master facilities plan at that same time. So we can kind of all see that together. But that's, I won't say that's all I have, but that's it.
For now?
Yeah.
Okay. This time we move on to action topics. Action topic A, consideration of types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the 21, 22 school year.
Okay, this is just a list of potential things that, that general fund monies may be used on.
Any additions to that from last year?
No.
Make a motion that we approve the general fund expenditure for the 21, 22 school year. Second.
Motion made by Kenny, second by David to allow the general fund expenditures during the 2021, 22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Action topic B, consideration of investment proposal.
And I don't, this wasn't uploaded because Mr. Butler was on vacation last week and we got this today. So it says, "Dear Mr. Morgan, the annual renewal on the pricing we offer on school accounts will soon be expiring. As you know, interest rates are still at an all-time low. We will adjust the margins to the six-month U.S. Treasury rate. Our bank will pay you 100% of the six-month U.S. Treasury rate and it will adjust monthly, each first day of each month. The current six-month U.S. Treasury rate is .06 as of July 8, 2021. This rate will change monthly. I have attached a sheet showing this rate for the past months." And so, and then you can see, I wish we had it on up there, but you can see kind of the graph. I believe this time last year, we were at a whopping .14, which we would take today. And then we're at .06 today. So we receive, monthly, we receive very little interest on anything. But that's his proposal for our financial plan with the bank.
Did farmers or C and B come up with anything or they contacted?
I don't know if Judy contacted either one of them.
If they had the opportunity, I guess.
We do that yearly, so I will be honest, I don't know. I don't know.
That seems awfully low. I mean, no interest rates are low, but I mean, I, I can, by myself, do better than that.
Personally?
Yeah. Even 1%, you know, you took it, I can't say I can do good, I'm doing better than that.
We can act on it or we can table it and go back and check with the others.
I'd like to, I mean, I don't know what y'all think.
I was approached by Chris about that, the possibility of him being able to do that. I know it's, I know it's a lot of work for his girls and them to move it, but.
I think it's worth that if we're asking.
Giving them the opportunity to.
If we get to 1%, it's worth it, right? I mean, that's a lot of money.
I don't, I don't think we'll get up to 1%.
Well, I don't know.
One day today.
Yeah, not anytime soon, but I mean, even if it was, you know, a point.
Yeah, we'll just need a motion to table.
Make a motion to table this proposal?
Motion made by Kenny, second by Brett to table investment proposal until further notice. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes, and Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of approval for David Morgan Superintendent to serve as the authorized representative of the Oklahoma State Board of Education Child Nutrition Program for the 21, 22 school year.
And that's just what that is. Give the authorization as the signing authorized representative for our school for child nutrition.
Make a motion that we approve David Morgan Superintendent to serve as authorized representative of the Oklahoma State Department which includes Child Nutrition Program for the 21, 22 school year.
Motion made by Jennifer, second by Kenny to approve David Morgan Superintendent to serve as the authorized representative of, representative of the Oklahoma State Board of Education Child Nutrition Programs for the 21, 22 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, authorization for Superintendent David Morgan to serve as the school board's federal programs legal representative for the 21, 22 school year. The federal programs included are as listed.
Well, and this just gives, once again, the authority to serve as the federal programs legal representative for next school year. And we've added our CARES Act, of course, last year. And then our PESTR monies in there on the top of this, on top of my second page. So that includes all of those federal programs in grants at this time.
Make a motion.
Yes.
This is as presented. I've already got, make a motion to authorize Superintendent David Morgan to serve as school board's federal programs legal representative for the 21, 22 school year.
legal representative for the 21-22 school year. Federal programs as listed. My second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David to authorize Superintendent David Morgan to serve as school board's federal programs legal representative for the 21-22 school year. Federal programs included are as listed. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of empowering Superintendent David Morgan to act on behalf of the State Board of Education in the approval of purchases and encumbrances of funds, assignment of purchase orders up to $10,000 for original purchases and change orders up to $750 for the school year 21-22, designated as district purchasing officer.
Okay. And just to approve encumbrances up to 10,000, anything above that comes before the board. And then change orders up to 750. And then anything over that comes before the board.
That's typical, right?
Right, that's it.
I make a motion to empower Superintendent David Morgan to act on behalf of the State Board of Education in the approval of purchases, encumbrances, and funds, assignments of purchase orders up to $10,000 for original purchases and change orders up to $750 for the school year 21-22, as listed.
My second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer to authorize Superintendent David Morgan to act on behalf of the State Board of Education in the approval of purchases, encumbrances of funds, assignments, purchase orders up to $10,000 for original purchases and change orders up to $750 for the school year 21-22. David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration of authorization of the following individuals and their responsibilities for the 21-22 school year as listed.
And those are mainly activity fund custodians that can pick up, mainly pick up bags and deliver money and pick up money from the bank, the bags. And I believe the only new ones are our two new secretaries, Shauna Smith and Brandy. Shauna Smith at the middle school, Brandy Tarrell at the elementary. Everyone else, I believe, is a secretary.
Make a motion, we authorize the individuals as listed. Did I say that?
Responsibilities?
Yeah, the responsibilities for the 21-22 school year.
Question made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to allow the following individuals as listed and their responsibilities for the 21-22 school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration as designated, Tony Gilmore, who both looks good. Tony Gilmore as the district safety coordinator and the school wellness program director for the 21-22 school year.
And these are both continuations of his duty. Last year, he took these two positions and he will direct those meetings and be the chairperson over those meetings.
Make a motion that we designate Tony Gilmore as the district safety coordinator and the school wellness program director for the community of schools.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to designate Tony Gilmore as the district safety coordinator and school wellness program director for the 21-22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of authorizing school district treasurer Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the 21-22 school year.
And just as that says, we have to have authorization to do that. And that's one of those that would be considered from general fund to building fund. We need authorization to do that. And that's a typical thing we've done also each year.
Make a motion that we authorize school district treasurer Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the 21-22 school year.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by David to authorize school district treasurer Judy Hamlin to deposit, to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the 21-22 school year. Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic J, consideration of approval of family educational rights in the Privacy Act, FERPA Plan, as provided for the fourth through section 438 of Public Law 93-380.
Okay, and this is something we must have approved each year. And it basically gives them four things, the right to inspect and review student their own child's records, the right to request an amendment to the student's records, and the right to consent to disclosures of records. And then the right to file a complaint against failures of the school district to comply. So we have to approve our FERPA policy for 21-22. No change of?
No.
IEP statement tall over there?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the FERPA Plan as provided for through section 438 of Public Law 93-380.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to approve the family educational rights and privacy FERPA Act Plan as provided for through section 438 of Public Law 93-380. Jennifer? Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic K, consideration of activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the 21-22 school year.
And just a list of our different activity accounts throughout the district. And this would be important if, if we were adding a new type of account or something. But our accounts are all the same as last year.
So make a motion, we approve the activity funds accounts and sub-accounts for the 21-22 school year as presented.
Question made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to accept the activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the 21-22 school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic L, consideration of student handbook changes for the 21-22 school year.
Okay, the elementary student handbook changes are really just dates and the name of the principal and those kinds of things. Middle school added a policy in prohibiting, officially prohibiting filming, videoing, or recording with a telecommunications device at school would be subject to disciplinary action. And then high school had a similar policy on the, well, the exact policy, on filming, video, videoing, or recording with telecommunications devices at school without prior approval from the principal is strictly prohibited and could possibly lead to suspension. Duration of the suspension would be determined by the severity of the offense and will be at the discretion of the high school principal. And then also, right above that, he had, we had put one in at the high school dealing with valedictorian, salutatorian behavior requirement. This is, if you read it there, if a, if someone in the running for valedictorian or salutatorian is suspended for any reason, and one of the conversations we had, I think you need to put a time period on there, and he put in their junior or senior year because I think if someone messes up their freshman year, I don't know that they're able to count with that all the way through their senior year. But this would be a suspension from school during their junior or senior year. It would take them out of running for valedictorian or salutatorian. And so he had those two additions.
Make a motion to approve changes to the handbook for the 21-22 school year.
My second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the changes for the student handbook for the 21-22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic M, consideration of allowing the school bus to be parked overnight at the homes of Spencer Jameson, Gerald Morris, Jackie Morris, and David Rebis for the 21-22 school year.
And we've done this before. If it's, if it's on way to their route and it's going to save time and money for the school, then we've allowed them to do that in the past. So we need approval for that.
Make a motion that we allow school buses to be parked overnight at the homes of Spencer Jameson, Gerald Morris, Jackie Morris, and David Rebis for the 21-22 school year.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to allow the school buses to be parked overnight at the homes of Spencer Jameson, Gerald Morris, Jackie Morris, and David Rebis for the 21-22 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic N, consideration of resolution allowing payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the 21-22 school year.
And we just need board approval to be able to do payroll deductions for insurance premiums for our employees for this next school year.
Make a motion that we approve payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the 21-22 school year.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by David to allow payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the 21-22 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic O, consideration of asbestos policy.
And the main part of this is that we re-inspect our buildings and, for any health problems due to asbestos being present. And we submit our asbestos policy and stating that we have no such problems.
I make a motion that we approve the asbestos policy.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to accept the asbestos policy. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic P, consideration of Stigler Parent-Family Engagement Policy for the 21-22 school year.
And this is a requirement for any school that receives Title I monies. And it's just our, our method of engagement with parents and families as per se with dealing with Title I funds. And this is the same as what we've had.
Make a motion to approve the Stigler Parent-Family Engagement Policy for the 21-22 school year.
Second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to allow the Stigler Parent-Family Engagement Policy for the 21-22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of driver's ed classes for the 21-22 school year.
Okay, and, and these classes will be, they'll be one in the, in January, beginning in January, and then one next summer. Our teachers are Tony Gilmore, which is the coordinator, Ryan Stamper, and then with the loss of Chris Risinghoover, Matt Jones in that spot. And the pay's the same at $25 an hour and then tuition of $150.
I make a motion that we approve the driver's ed classes and teachers for the 21-22 school year as listed.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to approve driver's ed classes for the 21-22 school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic R, consideration of game duty stipends for the employees for the 21-22 school year.
Okay, we've made no, no changes to these from last year. So we submit these, these, this duty schedule, pay scale.
Y'all never having trouble getting anybody to do it, do you?
No.
That's good.
I make a motion, we approve the game duty stipends for employees for the 21-22 school year.
My second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the game duty stipends for the employees for the 21-22 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic S, consideration of substitute teacher rates for the 21-22 school year.
And this we raised last year, but we, it remains the same as last year.
Make a motion and we approve the substitute teacher rate for the 21-22 school year.
Second.
Motion made by, motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to accept the substitute teacher rates for the 21-22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic T, consideration of approval of days-to-hours formula for the 21-22 school year.
And this just gives us the authority after tonight to go in and produce the worksheet and move our schedule from days calculated to hours. And that's what we've done in recent years.
Is that for payroll, I assume?
No, it's our school day.
Oh, 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 okay.
Right, from 180 days to 1,080 hours.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the days-to-hours formula for the 21-21-22 school calendar year.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett to approve the days-to-hours formula for the 21-22 school year calendar. Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the 21-22 school year.
Okay, and you had a list of those members and from High School County Emergency Management, Sheriff's Department, from our school, and parent and a student on that committee.
I make a motion, we approve the healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the 21-22 school year.
My second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the 21-22 school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic V, consideration of renewal of OKTLE agreement for the 21-22 school year.
And we have calculated 92 certified teachers, 92 at $24.75 per teacher. And then on leaders, principals, four at $160. That's a total of $2,917. And that's a good evaluation instrument, easy to use, and beneficial to the teacher on that end also.
Make a motion, we renew our OKTLE agreement for the 21-22 school year.
My second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to renew the OKTLE agreement for the 21-22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic W, consideration of renewing our OROS membership for the 21-22 school year.
The organization of rural Oklahoma schools, and we've been member, a member for years. And they do a good job of representing and lobbying for the rural schools of Oklahoma.
So they're basically just lobbyists?
Yes, and they provide professional development and training.
I should kind of list down here, kind of some of the things that they do.
What they do for you, that's correct.
Memberships informed through our website, monthly newsletter, basic school board policies with yearly updates, annual conferences, educators, related educators. So some of the things.
And then we, if we're a member of ORUS, we get a percentage discount on our OKTLE that we just approved.
Make a motion, we approve ORUS for the 21-22 school year.
My second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to renew our OROS membership for the 21-22 school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic X, consideration of renewing our OSEG membership for the 21-22 school year.
And similar, an organization that represents schools that started out representing schools that received significant impact aid money and gave training on that and has just developed into a good representation for schools in, you know, especially in eastern Oklahoma.
I make a motion, we renew our OSAC membership for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I'll second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by David, to renew our OSAC membership for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Y, consideration of contracting with Edgenuity for the online program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
This is the online curriculum we use in varied areas, and, uh, if you remember, last year, we had, uh, a part of Edgenuity was Odyssey where we used in our elementary, uh, but we've been able to pare that down. Last year was significantly more, but we, uh, asking to purchase it for Edgenuity for grade six through twelve, uh, with two units of professional development, uh, available, and concept coaching also, which is an additional fee, which offers for that student, they're working on English, there's a button they can push, and they'll get online help from, uh, an Edgenuity instructor.
So, did they modify the curriculum too?
I'm sorry.
The curriculum, does, does this software have all that in there, or is it?
Right, it's an online curriculum, so they may be enrolled in English too, or whatever, and they're taking it online. So, we use it in our enrichment classes at the high school, we use it in credit recovery and our alternative school, and then, any of our virtual learner surroundings. We use it a lot.
I make a motion, we approve contracting with Edgenuity for the online program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second. Question made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to, um, allow the contract with Edgenuity for the online program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Z, consideration of authorizing Melanie, Melanie Gorman as a designated signer on the First National Bank Activity Fund Account.
And the main designation this gives, uh, Ms. Gorman is to be able to sign checks within her building. So, uh, since she's a new elementary principal, we'd like to give her that authority.
Do we need to wait on that until we approve the comeback to what we tabled earlier about our investment proposals, or?
We can do it either way.
It is a lot of numbers.
It'll be void if we don't go with him. That's a good point.
Make a motion to approve Melanie Gorman as a designated signer of the First National Bank Activity Fund.
I'll second. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to, Jennifer, to authorize Melanie Gorman as a designated signer on the First National Bank Activity Fund Account. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
If I start that, I'll fall asleep.
Okay, this time I move on to executive session. Executive session, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma stacks, shoot three oh seven B one and two of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of certified personnel's salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number two, discussion of support personnel's salary schedules for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number three, discussion of retention stipends for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number four, discussion to employ a special education teacher for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number five, discussion to employ a guidance counselor for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number six, discussion to employ a part-time assistant coach for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number seven, discussion to employ route best drivers for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number eight, discussion to employ route activity best drivers custodian for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Number nine, discussion of resignation of Michelle Thornton, Ms., uh, Middle School Cafeteria Manager, effective July the eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to convene an executive session.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to convene an executive session at seven fifty-five P M. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, at eight thirty-seven P M, to return the board to open session. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were David Higgins, Brett Orm, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White, Superintendent David Morgan is also present. No votes or motions were made or taken.
Make a motion to accept the dis- certified personnel salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the, um, certified personnel salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer? Second?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the support personnel salary schedule for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Question made by Brett, seconded by Kenny, to accept the support personnel salary schedules for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to approve the retention stipends as presented for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Question made by Brett, um, yes, Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to, um, accept the retention stipends for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer? Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to have Melanie Hicks a special education teacher for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Melanie Hicks, special education ta- teacher for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to have Kelly Self as a part-time assistant coach for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll second. Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Kelly Self, um, guidance counselor for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to have Kelly Self as a part-time assistant coach for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to, um, employ Kelly Self, part-time assistant coach for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Second.
Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Brett, to employ Russell Paddle and David Revis, route best drivers for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Jennifer? Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to have Gerald Morris as a route activity best driver slash custodian for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Activity best drivers, huh?
Question made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Gerald Davis, I mean, Gerald Morris, Jackie Morris, um, for route activity best drivers custodians for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Michelle Thornton.
Question made by, uh, Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the resignation of Michelle Thornton, Middle School Cafeteria Manager, effective July the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer? And Susie, yes. Any new business?
No, ma'am. Much pleasure.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, at eight forty-two P M, at nine. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.